All right, now we'll bring the meeting to formal order. Our city council meeting for November 2nd, 2016. With the city clerk, please call the roll.
Councilman DeCecio.
Here.
Councilman Noakowski.
Here.
Councilwoman Pastor.
Here.
Councilwoman Stark.
Here.
Councilman Valenzuela. Councilman Waring. Councilwoman Williams.
Here.
Vice Mayor Gallego.
Here.
Mayor Stanton. Here. We have a quorum present. We have an interpreter with us today. Ms. Holmes, please introduce yourself for the audience.
Buenas tardes, me llamo Judy, soy intérprete de español. Si alguien necesita el equipo, por favor venga conmigo o con el personal de la ciudad. Gracias.
Thank you very much, Ms. Holmes. Now is the time for citizen comments. Citizens have up to three minutes to provide commentary to the city council on any issue they'd like. I have one card for citizen comment. Ms. Didi Barker, Ms. Barker, the floor is yours.
You said it, plenty of room to do cartwheels, Mayor, and thank you. Good afternoon, Council Diane Barker, District 7. And what do we do on Mondays? We get out, no matter the weather, or if it's a holiday, we get out to downtown Phoenix and we're inviting everybody to the birthday party. And when is this? It's a week from next Monday. It'll be over at Copper Blues, they're celebrating. We've had shirts now where a couple people've earned them for being there 100 times. That's, we've been there over a year and a half. We've had over 15,000 people come and join us. What the deal is, is that we walk or run to Hans Park, we come back, we have music discounts in the restaurant, the bar, and then free raffle tickets for the major games, you know, with the D-backs, Mercury, and Suns Symphony. It is a fun thing, you see people. We want to have people from the city come over there on the 14th. You know, we're going to have birthday cakes, and if you're taking the express bus home, take a later one. Come to work that day on a local bus or ride share with a friend that'll come, or plan to do something different and come downtown and join us. Also, I've been over at the Board of Supervisors this morning, and, you know, they got the appraisal back. They're not talking now about the offer that's going into the D-backs Stadium. And the thing, I want you to be real open-minded about this because the first reaction is particularly on social media, oh, no, no more for those millions to those players, they need a bigger, better team, and I don't want Jerry and the boys to get any... This thing is way beyond that. It has to do with basically a shelf life in today's type of attendance to games, and it's a bigger picture in my mind than just a stadium because now we have the Coyotes, or the Suns Arena, they're going through possible renovation, and we've got fries coming down here as a grocery store. All these things are happening at once, and if they work together, and make these offer people pay to play. And so I want you to get involved, people that are online, a lot of people know what's in those contracts. I've read the facility use, and guess what? They need to be multi-modal, Mayor, and so, you know, they could start making a beautiful transit center down there around that facility, and they even have the train tracks right there. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Barker. I have no other cards for citizen comment, so move forward with our agenda. Next on the agenda, with the city clerk, please read the 24-hour paragraph.
The titles of the following ordinances and resolution numbers on the agenda were available to the public at least 24 hours prior to this council meeting and therefore may be read by title or agenda item only. Ordinances number G-6191, 6192, 6210, and 6226 through 6237, S-42958 through 42975, and resolutions number 21463, 21494, and 21495.
Thank you very much. Next are minutes of previous meetings. Councilwoman Pastor, have you had a chance to review the formal meeting minutes from August 31, 2016?
I have, and I approve those minutes.
Second.
We have a motion of approval and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Next, we have boards and commissions. We have a motion on Mayor's proposed boards and commission nominations.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. How about city council boards and commission nominations?
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. My understanding that there are citizen leaders here to be sworn in for their positions, so I'll come down to my right, your left. If you could stand before this body, and I'll swear you in, and then afterwards we'll come behind the dais, and the individual council members can say thank you in advance for your service. Your individual name, and fill in the blank for the board... All right, so please raise your right hand. Aye. Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same, and defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic, and that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of the office of... Which office?
Library.
Library?
Development Advisory Board.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
You're official. Thank you for your service. Follow Carl. Say, council members would like to say thank you for your service. All right, thank you in advance for your service as a citizen of Phoenix. It is very, very important service. Next on the agenda are liquor license applications. Do we have a motion on liquor license applications?
Motion to approve items 1 through 11.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any cards on those items? There are three cards, all in favor of the proposal. There's a motion, there's a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Next on the agenda are ordinances, resolutions, new business, and we have some planning and zoning agenda items. Vice Mayor, do we have an omnibus motion today?
We do. Motion to approve items 12 through 58, except the following: Items 12A, 12B, 12C, 12E, 12I, 12J, 12K, 12L, 18, 23, 24, and 27. Items 54 through 58 have been withdrawn. We withhold item 38, and then we have public comment cards on items 18 and 23 through 24.
That is the motion. Is there a second? Is there any other items that members of the council would like to pull from the omnibus motion? All right, roll call. DeCecio.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark. Waring. Williams.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton. Yes, those items pass unanimously. Are we able to get 12?
Mayor, this is Daniel Valenzuela, and I'm voting yes.
Okay, thank you very much, Councilman Valenzuela. Are we able to do 12A through L as a single item? Okay. So the other ones, so we get a motion on 12A, C, E, I, J, K, and L?
Move approval of those items.
Second, we have a motion and a second. Are there any comments on those items? Roll call. DeCecio.
No.
Noakowski.
No.
Pastor.
No. What are we, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, these are the payment ordinance items.
Oh, yes.
That's okay.
Sorry.
That's okay.
I didn't realize what you were doing.
Stark.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Waring.
No.
Williams.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton. Yes, so those items pass on a 7 to 2 vote, 6-2, I apologize, 6-3, 6-3 vote. 12B.
Move approval of item 12B, AMWA.
Second.
The motion and second in favor are membership dues for AMWA. Are there any comments on that item? Roll call. DeCecio.
No.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor. Stark. Valenzuela.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton. Yes, so that item passes 8-1 or 7-2? 8-1, 12B passes, okay. Next item on the agenda is item number 18. Item 18 is an item concerning the Phoenix Planning and Development Department that concerns a change in our city policy as a result of execution of demolition permit. Alan Stevenson is our planning... Okay, city clerk, first read the title, and then I'll turn it over to Alan Stevenson, our planning director, for an explanation of what's being proposed on item 18. Mr. City Clerk.
Item 18, ordinance G-6226, and ordinance amending Phoenix Construction Code adopted pursuant to Section 9-1, and ordinance G-5908, authorizing the city manager to create a new plan or one position to review demolition permits for commercial buildings that are 50 years or older.
Thank you very much. Mr. Stevenson, could you describe in general what is being proposed on item 18?
Mayor, members of council, thank you. Item 18 is a request to amend the 2012 Phoenix Building Construction Code to require a 30 calendar day waiting period and public notice prior to issuance of a demolition permit for commercial buildings that are 50 years old or older, and for all buildings that have been identified as individually eligible for historic designation. It further requests authorization to create a new plan or one position to administer this process, and a new $300 application fee for permits for cost recovery purposes for the development fund. This particular item comes to you with a request for approval of the 30 calendar days from the Historic Preservation Commission, from the Development Advisory Board, as well as from the City Council Downtown Aviation, Economy, and Innovation Subcommittee. And with that, we're happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you very much. So the recommendation is a 30-day period between when the permit, or when the permit is pulled, or when the actual demolition may occur?
Correct, Mayor. 30 calendar days.
What's current policy?
Current policy is a three-day hold only in downtown.
Got it, okay. All right.
Mayor, I might just point out one other thing.
Mr. City Manager, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Because of state posting requirements, there would be a companion item that would need to follow related to the fee. The $300 proposed fee would have to be posted for 60 days before that would come back separately to the council.
That would be coming back at a later time before this council?
Yes.
Okay, but it's assumed that if this policy passes, there would be a fee necessary to execute it, to hire the position to ensure that any buildings that are potentially historic at least have a 30-day period, they can be identified appropriately.
Mayor, that is correct.
Excellent. All right, before I turn to members of council, we have many cards on this item. I'll first turn to a member of our city HP Commission, Mr. Bill Shield. Mr. Shield, would you provide testimony on this item first? This comes recommended by the HP Commission?
Yes, Mayor and council, thank you so much for putting this on your agenda today. My name is Bill Shield, I'm Chair of the city's Historic Preservation Commission. We came to this point because of a number of demolitions in the downtown area of significant historic properties, and just feeling like we needed a change in process to make sure that both city staff, the community, and the council were aware of what was happening in terms of the many significant historic properties we have in our city that may not have official historic designation. I want to emphasize that this policy change does not mandate preservation, it does not affect anyone's property rights, what it does is create some time and some notification, so again, the community and the city are aware of what is happening. And the advantage we see from the commission is that, and we've seen it in the past, where having the opportunity to sit down and speak with developers and property owners about their plans typically creates a better project that is better for the community and better for historic preservation. And I want to emphasize one point of discussion throughout this process is that the 30-day hold is an important step, but what's even more important is having an internal process in the city so that property owners and developers are aware when they come to the counter that properties may have some significance. And so, the way we envision this, and we've had many discussions with Alan Stevenson, that the sooner we can alert property owners that they may have a property that is potentially eligible, we want to make sure that happens. So we appreciate the efforts to streamline that process as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bill Shield, member of the city HP Commission. Next, although you marked a card not wishing to speak, but is our friend and state representative, Ken Clark. He's in favor of the proposal. Want to change your mind and speak, or you just want to register your... Okay, good to see you. Appreciate it. Other speakers, let's see, we have almost all the cards are in favor. We have one who is neutral. If you're in favor of the item and someone has already made the point that you would like to make, you're not required to make the same point again. John Glenn, you're in favor of the item?
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, John Glenn, 2302 North Central Avenue. I'm an architect and central Phoenix resident. I'm certainly in support of this. I think, understanding the realities that we do live in a strong property ownership rights state, this seems to be a very, very reasonable and modest step to try to preserve a couple structures. I would certainly echo Mr. Shield's comments. I do think that the more proactive we can be, especially in terms of working with prospective property owners before the pre-site planning phase, that's where we're going to let people know in advance that there is a potentially important structure sitting on the property. But I'd just take this opportunity to point out that if we're going to have substantial and substantive change and impact in this arena, we have to be proactive, we have to have more robust tools, and we probably could stand to fill the coffers of the Historic Preservation Grant Fund through whatever mechanism, but buying up easements, in my opinion, is probably the most impactful way we're going to go about making substantive change in this area. So thank you.
Thank you very much. By the way, you're a member of the planning commission, but you're not speaking on behalf of the planning commission today.
That is correct, sir. I am not speaking on behalf of the planning commission. Thank you.
Great to see you. Thanks for your service. Stacy Champion.
Mayor, members of the council, thank you. I just wanted to start by saying thank you to everyone who's worked on this, staff, committees, elected officials, community members. Before the destruction of Greenhouse, I took notice of a similar ordinance passed by the city of Los Angeles and started community conversations to move in this direction. Following the partial demolition of the Circles Building, I started a petition, which I have that has received nearly 500 signatures to date. Community, neighborhoods, history, place. As Americans, we spend approximately 90% of our time indoors. These places become an integral part of our lives and shape our sense of community and well-being. Buildings hold our memories, our hopes, our fears, and our energy. People by nature are drawn to historic buildings for all these reasons and more. They were often built by craftsmen with the intention of living on for many generations to come. I both live and work in historic structures for this very reason. As we've shifted to become a more consumerism-driven and wants-based society, this norm of craftsmanship was lost, but I ask you, when's the last time you visited a city to tour the newest stick-frame stucco apartment buildings? Because my guess is never. We've lost far too many iconic pieces of history in Phoenix. This added layer of transparency and opportunity for public input is at least a positive step in the right direction. Though I understand the need for density and growth, I would ask the city to be more thoughtful to the importance of community and place. These smaller threads are interwoven in a way that is vital to retaining the soul and culture of our city. Sometimes the smallest things can actually have the biggest impact. In the words of Edward Abbey, "Growth for the sake of growth is the ideology of the cancer cell." Please remember, the people, its buildings, and their combined energy are what make a community. Thank you again, and I look forward to your yes vote on this matter.
Thank you very much, Ms. Champion. Appreciate your leadership. How about Brent Kleinman? Your mark is neutral on the item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Neutral is a little tough. My concern is, I was reading through the reports today, and I would just want to get a clarification. The staff recommendation has changed the hold to a 10-day, business day hold versus a 30-day hold? Are we, what is the motion and what is the proposal? Because the documents in this morning, as I was reading, mentioned a 10-business-day hold.
You, I think you're actually correct on that. I apologize. I think staff was recommending one thing, the HP Commission recommended another. Do we have a motion on the table? Or, okay, so a motion has not yet been made yet. So I apologize that I should have made that more clear. Staff's recommending 10-business?
Correct, Mayor, members of the council. So the original staff recommendation was 10-business days. However, through the process, because of significant public involvement, the Development Advisory Board, Historic Preservation Commission, and the city council subcommittee all recommended the 30 calendar day hold, and that's why I sit before you today saying the 30 calendar days is what staff is recommending.
All right, so I guess our staff has seen the light.
Okay, then, my neutral goes to an approval, and I am very much in favor of this passing with the 30-day calendar hold. I was just concerned that there wasn't going to be everyone speaking approving this, then find out after the fact that we're switching this to 10-business days. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the clarification. I will mark, change your card to in favor in light of the information. How about Connor Dishemaker? I apologize for blowing it.
Mayor, members of council, thank you so much for your time. I'm a member of the Development Advisory Board, and here to say my strong approval in favor of this measure. I think it's very much the great first step for our city to take as far as taking greater care and greater deliberation towards the decisions we make with our historic structures. As a person who also lives and works in adaptively reused structures within the greater downtown Phoenix area, I think this is a really, really great opportunity for us to have more careful consideration, especially as our greater downtown has three or four more significant structures that are not currently protected under historic preservation ordinance, that are facing demolition at this very moment. So I think that if this, the sooner this is in place, the better we can be equipped to deal with threats to the character and sense of place in the city of Phoenix. So, thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony and your leadership. How about Diane Barker? You're in favor with modifications.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Yeah, thank you to Sherry Rampey from the Roosevelt Neighbor Association. She brought this up last evening, and so I'm speaking here in favor of it. And after speaking with some people in the community, you know, time is money, and we live today in vast communications, not only online but telephonic conferences. I would have voted for the medium, the 20-day period, and we have a lot of buildings that are going to be over 50 years of age, so I'd like to have you consider that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Barker. Our final speaker in favor of the proposal is Jim McPherson with the Arizona Preservation Foundation.
Mayor and members of city council, my name is Jim McPherson, 914 East Osborne, President of the Arizona Preservation Foundation, and we fully support the 30-day hold amendment recommended by the Phoenix Historic Preservation Commission, the Development Advisory Board Administrative Subcommittee, and Council Subcommittee. We sincerely believe 30 days is a reasonable length of time for review and action to be taken to confirm this historic significance and integrity of commercial structures and sites 50 years of age and above, or those of exceptional significance regardless of the construction date. As I mentioned, I'm President of the Arizona Preservation Foundation, and so when I'm out in Sedona, Springfield, Eager, Vale, Maricopa, Mesa, Dewey, Humboldt, Flagstaff, and Kingman in the last six months, we're looking, we always then have to come back to Phoenix and the issues that arise in Phoenix, and it would be wonderful if, you know, Phoenix takes the stand and takes a leadership role in promoting a stronger preservation ordinance so I can spend more time on positive preservation versus negative. Too many historic buildings in our capital city have been destroyed simply by filling out a one-page request for demolition and waiting three days. Our community's heritage and its future deserve better. Thank you for your consideration in this matter and for your public service each and every day. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jim, for your testimony, and again, your leadership. In favor of the proposal, not wishing to speak, Sherry Rampey, George Pascal III, Monica Goddard, Lindsey Robinson, Cynthia Gahn, Derek Horn, and Beatrice Moore, and we have one other card, Ashley Harder from Harder Development in favor, not wishing to speak. Is anyone else in the audience here wishing to provide any testimony before this council on item number 18? All right, I'll now turn to members of the council. Councilwoman Pastor.
I would like to thank the community and everybody in the Historic Preservation community for bringing this forward. I would like to make a motion, and my motion would be to approve the demolition permit changes per the Downtown Aviation, Economic, and Innovation Subcommittee recommendation and adopt the related ordinance, which includes 30 days.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilwoman Pastor, a second of Councilman Noakowski to support the recommendation of the HP Commission for a 30-day hold with the hiring of a professional employee to ensure compliance, noting that the cost for that will come up before this council on a future agenda item. I'll now turn to members of the council for any comments or questions they'd like to make on that motion. Vice Mayor.
I am looking forward to seeing, as that employee, that new employee does the research about our history, some of the new things we'll learn about Phoenix, and I'm excited that we may have new stories we find. So often, in the real estate community, is most excited about the historic portions of our city. I have the pleasure with Councilman Noakowski of representing the Warehouse District, and that, I think every day we get a new inquiry about someone who's interested in coming to that area. It has really become such an epicenter of creative jobs and companies that know that great companies need great buildings, and hopefully we can find even more treasures that we don't know exist, so this could really be a plus for the kind of spaces that innovative companies are looking for, and we can learn even more about the history of our great city. So I look forward to supporting the item, and want to thank all the people who worked very hard to get us here where we are today. Unfortunately, we have some buildings that are, after council meeting, we're going to be working to try to protect later today because we do have some challenges, but one more tool will be helpful.
Thank you very much. Other comments? Councilman Noakowski.
Mayor, I just really want to thank everyone for sitting around the table and having that conversation. There were some conversations that weren't really comfortable, but basically sitting around that table, working it out, and finding common ground. I just really want to thank you. And basically, I went to school, St. Mary's High School, that was right in downtown where the Arizona Center is. And when I was driving downtown with my kids, I was telling them, "Well, Dad, where did you go to high school?" "Well, right there, right next to Hooters, it used to be my classroom." You know, so we're losing all those jewels, and I think this is a way for us to preserve that history so that I can tell stories to my kids and my grandkids to come, and I believe it's really important to have that history be preserved. And Phoenix is growing so fast that we need to sometimes take a couple steps back and just look at things, and I think this is going to allow us to take 30 days to really absorb everything and make the right decision. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Noakowski. Councilman Waring?
Thank you. I'm against this, and I'd like to explain why. We're creating another layer of bureaucracy and more cost, adding fees, et cetera. We always talk about being business-friendly. This is not business-friendly, making developers jump through more hoops. They do have options, they don't have to develop in Phoenix or anywhere else. Not all development is ideal, but I have to say, so the best examples, apparently, that at least were listed in the paper, were trying to preserve an old bank, an old car wash, an old grocery store, and an old mortuary. There's nobody coming to Phoenix to visit any of those sites. Now, you'll probably find one person, so I apologize to that one person now. But I like my old school. They bulldozed my old grade school back in Illinois, it made me very sad, but realistically, it was an old school. So they didn't build them all there, they built a different school. But if they had built the Arizona, if they had not built the Arizona Center so that my grade school was preserved, that doesn't make any sense. So it doesn't. It's nostalgic for me, believe it or not. Most of you come to these meetings, will never believe it, I'm as nostalgic as it gets. I love old stuff, I really enjoy that. But at a certain point, I don't care how nice it is, an old mortuary... But at a certain point, I don't care how nice it is, an old mortuary, an old bank, I was very sad when Bashes moved out of my neighborhood. My wife and I used to walk at our old house, and that was something she really enjoyed and still talks about, but it's a grocery store. It's not Mount Vernon. So while I appreciate that this is well-intentioned, you're making it harder on the people that are really the lifeblood of this community, creating things and building stuff. Also, 1966, 1967, maybe because it was... I was born at the end of 1967. Doesn't seem that old. You know, maybe if it's 1927 or something, that might make more sense, but really, you want to see a building that was built in about 1960 that deserves to be demolished that probably would be preserved? Go take a look at our state capitol. Place is a dump. I worked there for years. It just... It deserves to go, but honestly, you know, it's old. I guess it qualifies. It's over 50 years. Sometimes old stuff is just old, and sometimes it's not worth preserving. Maybe in this case, this will save something of value, but it's easy for us to say it's not our time, it's not our money, really. It makes it easy for us to make these kind of decisions. Frankly, I suspect probably the people who will be building stuff in Phoenix aren't the people who brought this forward or asked for this either. It's easy to spend other people's time and money, and that's what we're doing here. And so I appreciate that it was well-intentioned, but I look at this list, it would just be hard for me to justify, so I'm voting no. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? Mayor? Members of the council? Councilman DeCiccio, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of questions of staff.
Please.
Oh, go ahead. I'm sorry, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Does this include single-family homes as well? Is that correct?
Mayor, Councilman DeCiccio, it only includes commercial buildings that are 50 years old or older. The only exception is if there are single-family homes that were part of a prior historic preservation study and were aware of their eligibility, then they would be included. So for example, when the David and Gladys Wright House was discovered, one of the things the council directed staff to do was a study of other Frank Lloyd Wright-designed homes. So we now have done a historic preservation study of other single-family homes that were designed by Mr. Wright, and so we have a study. We would include them as part of this because we know they're historically eligible, but it's only the single-family homes that we have a historic study on and we know are eligible.
So the study would have already been created, correct? I'm just getting it for the record.
Say it again, Councilman, please.
The study would have already been created, correct?
Correct, Councilman DeCiccio, yes.
Okay. And then, do we know how many commercial properties would fit this category?
Mayor, Councilman DeCiccio, we do not have an estimate on that.
It could be quite a bit, and, you know, I thought the 10-day was becoming cumbersome but more realistic that you could use in this economy, but right now, when we don't even know how many commercial properties are out there, that's a problem. The concern I've got, Mayor, is this, is that I think everybody would like to see our, you know, our history preserved, but that doesn't mean every single property that's out there would have to come forward. I mean, all you have to do is look up and down Central Avenue, look up and down Seventh Street, look up and down Seventh Avenue, and you can go all the way through all of the streets and all of the avenues just as you're going just even north and south, let alone not even going east and west in our city. And you're talking thousands of properties that are now going to be subjected to this law when the city doesn't even have enough people on its own staff to be able to review every single one of these processes. The 10-day was already going to become a cumbersome situation for the small-business guy. Most of these properties are not owned by large companies. They're not owned by large developers. They're owned by the small businessman and woman in our community, and now we're putting another roadblock in their way, and I think that that's a problem. And I think it's a problem that doesn't make the city of Phoenix a business-friendly city. It doesn't... Definitely does not make the city of Phoenix a small-business-friendly city. Most of these businesses, most of these properties, most of these commercial buildings are owned by the small mom-and-pop print shops, yogurt shops, those types of properties. I'll be voting no on this, Mayor.
All right, thank you very much. Any other comments by members of this council? I'll certainly be supporting the motion. I want to thank the HP Commission, Stacy Champion, other community leaders for bringing this idea forward. It's hardly a novel idea. It's an idea that's been widely implemented in other cities that care about protecting their history. It's a challenging issue. Anytime you put any kind of a timeline, additional timeline, on a proposed development project, certainly we have to be cognizant of the fact that that is a small restriction on redevelopment of the property in light of our priority, our consistent priority of this council, to try to do what we can with the tools that we have to try to preserve our history, to take the time to really look at a building and determine whether or not it's of the significant value that we want to work with a developer, potentially to come up with new concepts and ideas, adaptive, potential adaptive reuse. A potential developer may not be aware of the tools that the city of Phoenix can help them with or of our adaptive reuse project, other concepts that may actually provide more value to the property owner by working with us and reutilizing an existing mid-century marvel and/or historic building. So I actually think that the 30-day period in terms of balancing the interests, our significant interest in preserving important historical buildings in our community is worth it, and I really do appreciate the community members, the leaders, including the developers, who have provided cards in favor of today's proposal. So we have a motion in favor of the HP recommendation. We have a second. Roll call. DeCiccio?
No.
Nowakowski?
Yes.
Pastore?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Valenzuela?
Yes.
Waring?
Williams?
Yes.
Gallego?
Yes.
Mayor Stanton? Yes, so the item passes on a seven-to-two vote before this city council. Next item on the agenda is item number 23. Item number 23 is staff recommendation to approve the Downtown Enhanced Municipal Services District, known as Downtown Phoenix Partnership. The estimate of expenses, assessment of expenses, and set a hearing date.
Mayor, you can probably combine 23 and 24 if you'd like.
That's the way the cards. Thank you, Councilman. Item number 24 is an approval of the Downtown Enhanced Municipal Services District Assessment Diagram. I have a few cards to speak, mostly cards wishing to register their support of item 23 and 24 without wishing to speak. So I guess I'll first turn to the council and see if there is a motion on item 23 and 24.
Move approval of items 23 and 24.
I'll second that, Mayor.
We have a motion in favor of 23. We have a motion in favor of 24. Both have been seconded. I'll turn now to Maria Byer, who wishes... Do you wish to speak, Ms. Byer, on this item? Says, "If necessary." I'll leave it to you to determine whether it is necessary. Not necessary, all right. Thank you very much. Maria Byer is a former member of this body. It's good to see you back here again, and she knows that when you have a positive motion on your item, you can only go backwards from there. All right, good. How about Dan Klocke? Did you wish to provide testimony before this council, Mr. Klocke? Dan Klocke with the Downtown Phoenix Partnership, also in favor, is deferring. If something comes up by a council, you could certainly run up to the mic to correct the record as necessary. Also in favor, not wishing to speak, John Bruno, Brett Berendrick, Nikki Caciaro, my former junior high basketball teammate, A.J. Sulka, good to see you. That is a true story. Mike Bedici, Smith Group, Travis Pensby, Billy Shields, Chevry Humphrey, Science Center, Shirley Mays, Dean of the Arizona Summit Law School, David Kreider, DPI, Kathleen Santin, Randy Lopez, Steve Hibbard, and Jeff Malosnick. Okay, so we have a motion in favor of 23 and 24. Now, those are the cards. I'll now turn to the council. Any comments or questions on 23 or 24? Vice Mayor.
Just briefly, I represent the city council on the board of the Downtown EMSD, and it was great to see it, our board meeting, strong support from the people who pay into it, who were very excited about the value that they received and encouraged us to support it. So thank you to the folks who run the organization and who did the hard work to make sure we had that support.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? Roll call. DeCiccio?
No.
Nowakowski?
Yes.
Pastore?
Yes.
Stark?
No.
Valenzuela?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Gallego?
Yes.
Mayor Stanton? Yes, the item passes on a six-three vote before this city council. Next item on the agenda is item 38?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven, I apologize. Twenty-seven. Oh, twenty... Okay, I'm sorry. Twenty-seven is the proposed issuance of airport bond obligations and airport refunding obligations. This is very similar to the item that we voted on last agenda item about significant improvements to Phoenix Sky Harbor Airport, and this is a technical issue that we need to do to facilitate that agreement, Mr. City Manager.
Mayor, that's correct. The council, last Tuesday, by a policy vote, adopted the plan to move forward with improvements at Sky Harbor International Airport. This gives the finance... The chief financial officer, the ordinance authority, to move forward to fund those improvements.
Okay. You have a motion on item 27. Councilman Valenzuela, do you wish to issue a motion on that?
Absolutely, Mayor. Motion to approve staff recommendation.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments by members of this council? Roll call. DeCiccio?
Yes.
Nowakowski?
Yes.
Pastore?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Valenzuela?
Yes.
Waring?
No.
Williams?
Yes.
Gallego?
Yes.
Mayor Stanton? Yes. That item passes eight-one. Eight-one. All right, next item on the agenda is item number 38.
Move approval of 38.
Potential conflict, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman. We have a motion on 38 noting Councilman DeCiccio's potential conflict. He will not be participating in the vote. Is there a second on 38?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any cards? Any comments or questions by members of this council? Roll call.